The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
September 13th, Town Council meeting to order. It's been so long, I don't know where we left off. So Brian, why don't we start here on pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining this evening. Our first order of business is our Eagle Scout, and I do not believe our Eagle Scout is here. Unless he's hiding somewhere. Okay. Then we move on to item two, presentation from CROG. Kathy, would you like to make any comments?
Sure. I think Russ Arnold's here, and he can do the introductions.
Great.
Jumped up my game here. Good evening, everybody. My name's Russ Arnold. I am the Director of Public Works and Town Engineer for the Town of Farmington. And we're here tonight to talk about the Route 4 connectivity study. That is a precursor to our third bridge project that we're trying to move along through the whole process of design, funding, funding than design and construction. With me tonight, I have Roger Cron from CROG and Quacey Brown from SLR, the consultant who performed the extensive study. And I'll just give you a brief overview of where we've been and how we got here. Back in 2016, we came to the council and talked about the location of the bridge being across the river here. It'll be the extension of Monty Drive. The Farmington River is at this location, the narrowest point of the river. Elevation wise, it's a perfect crossing. The elevation of Route 4 and Monty Drive is about 35 feet higher than New Britain Avenue. The structure will be, the bridge structure itself will be short. We're talking a couple hundred feet from start to finish. There'll be no construction within the waterway, which is a huge bonus. There'll be, there'll be a footing and pier in the floodway, so we'd have to compensate for flood storage, which will be minimal. You're talking a couple hundred yards, so that can easily be accommodated in that, on the south side of the river. And from the 2016 council meeting, we then were charged with this process, with this project to go forward. We did preliminary plans back in 2018 in December. We came to the town council, presented that preliminary plan set to that, to the council at the time. There was a consensus to approve the project at its location and move on and keep going. And as part of the process, excuse me, this study is going to show that the benefit is regional. It's not just for the Town of Farmington. It will reduce the traffic congestion in Unionville as well as Farmington Center. It'll open up the 177 corridor, the Route 10 corridor, as well as the Route 4 corridor, which reducing traffic and traffic volume is a huge impact for the project. It's a big benefit. And up here, you'll see on the screen now is a proposed design of the project. The intersection you see, I think the pointer doesn't show up here, it does. This intersection is Route 4. Here's the bridge over the river. There are a couple lookouts that we're proposing, just like we have on the Route 4 bridge in Farmington Center. If you're ever walking on that section of the road, you can stop, look out at the river, see our nice outfall from a treatment plant that's been there for 65 years. But it's a great place to just have a little respite and stop and check in, check out the scenery and what's going on on the river. Another big benefit to this, before I move, I'll just, I'll move across. So come across New Brit, New Britain Avenue, the intersection, we're in the industrial area. A little bit, a couple hundred feet to the east, to the west is Oak Ridge, which is a trail connection. So we have a big impact with that. One thing that will also be an impact for the town is the river access that we'll be gaining. Back in, I think it was 2007 or '08, we had a river access committee to try and control, gain as much property as we can to control the river and the access to it. So that, that'll be a big benefit as well. There will be, on the bridge itself, you'll have three lanes. Heading south, you'll have a one lane heading, heading north, coming into the campus. You'll have a dedicated left turn lane with a straight and a through, a right turn lane. And as you cross the structure, you'll have a dedicated left turn and a dedicated right, as well as a lane coming to get you back onto the bridge coming this way. That's, I think, one of the bigger assets is to reduce the traffic on, as I said previously, on the, on this intersection, in the centers, two different centers. But I think that one of the bigger reasons for the project that'll help is our turning lanes on Route, on Route 4 onto the campus itself. There could be a dedicated right turn lane and dedicated left turn lane heading east, which where, as everyone knows, if you've come to the high school early in the morning for drop off, the backup towards Unionville can sometimes hit Unionville Center and stop and shop. So we're going to, as part of the project, we're going to have about a 250, 300 foot left turn lane, which will accommodate about 15 to 20 cars, depending on the car style. On the westbound leg, we're going to have a dedicated through lane and a right turn lane, as well as a left turn lane to go over the structure, over the new bridge. And here's just a snapshot of one of the lookouts on the structure itself over the river. And this was a concept that we had back from 2018. And at that point, I think what we'll do is go through, finish the presentation. Roger will come up and talk about what we, how we proceeded through the study. Quacey will come up and discuss some of the details of the study itself and what was found, and then maybe entertain questions at the end. Would that work for you?
Great.
Is that good? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
To advance?
To advance.
Okay. So I am Roger Cron with a Transportation Engineer with the Capital Region Council of Governments. I'm serving as a project manager for this study. So this is one of a typical corridor study type project that CROG does with funding from the Connecticut Department of Transportation to look at some projects in a little more detail. So our particular study, which is the Farmington Connectivity Study, through, in our work program, has the tasks outlined there. So one is public outreach and stakeholder engagement. That is important from, you know, in order to advance a project like this, we want to get it funded and endorsement from the Connecticut Department of Transportation to secure funding through a conventional funding program. So they like to see the public support for the project and the local governmental support for the project. So I'll touch on that a little more in a minute. Traffic analysis, the second bullet there. Quacey is going to go into a little more detail on that. He's also, their firm, SLR, is also going to look at the two intersections at each engine, each side of the bridge, the north end and south side, some preliminary concepts, further developing what Russ just talked about with the lane arrangements. And then lastly, that purpose and need statement, that's a, needed to advance the NEPA process. The National Environmental Policy Act is the environmental regulations that would dictate that are regulated by the federal government and the CEPA process to advance a project like this. So as part of our work, when we talked to DOT, we thought, well, it'd be good to solidify that a little, a little better. What is the purpose of the project? What's the need for the project? So we'll get that in our study report as well. So the next slide, oops. The stakeholder engagement. What we've done so far, we had a number of meetings. We met with the Town of Farming, some Town of Farmington officials, the Board of Education and Emergency Services back in December. We also had a meeting with adjacent town engineers and their planners to let them know that we are conducting this, this particular study. We also met on December 16th with the environmental groups associated with the Farmington River. So we did meet with the scenic, scenic river committee. National Park Service was represented at that meeting, and the Farmington River Watershed Association was also there. So we talked briefly about the special requirements that are required because it's a scenic river that we have to go through when the project is further developed, and the permitting in general. We also met on February 16th with Connecticut Transit about the potential bus route changes and opportunities that, that might be there. We didn't talk any, any, any detail about changing bus routes, but just let them know that the project is underway. Then on February 25th, we met with Connecticut DOT and their normal, regular meeting that they have with a wide variety of environmental groups to kind of get the high level of if this project is advanced, what are, what are the environmental regulations and permits that would be needed. So we met with them. And then we, we anticipate having a public information meeting on the project as well. So that's some of the stakeholder engagement that we've done. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Quacey and let him get into a little bit of the traffic analysis.
Good evening. For the record, Quacey Brown, I manage a transportation engineering group within SLR, and very happy to be here. So advancing to the next slide. So the study involved a number of tasks, and some of which Roger's already talked about. There was, and we have been doing extensive data collection. We've also looked at existing conditions from a traffic standpoint. The study also involves a future conditions analysis, looking at future projections. In this study, we are looking at the year 2050. And then, as Roger also said, we'll be looking at developing alternatives and concepts and the touchpoints of the, of the bridge. And then finally, developing a purpose and need statement so we can advance this study into design and, and, and construction. We realize that this is not just a local study. I mean, this is a regional study with regional implications. So we, in identifying the study area, we really went out wide and really identified an extensive study area. We ended up with 27 intersections involving some neighboring towns. So we have some intersections in Avon and Burlington and Bristol as well, and then obviously in the Town of Farmington. And, and those intersections are shown on that, on the slide in front of you. So in terms of progress to date, what we have done so far, we, we've done an extensive data collection. We've gotten traffic data as well as safety data within this broad study area that I'm, I'm talking about. We've done an existing conditions analysis, really identifying where the bottlenecks are, where the issues are on the, on the study area intersections and the roadway system. And then we've done a future conditions analysis. We've looked at future 2050 conditions and looked at a number of scenarios. So we looked at four main scenarios. Scenario one, which is really what we call a no build condition, where if the new Monty Bridge was not constructed or was not in place, what would happen with, with the Route 177 Bridge? And then we have a build condition, and that scenario, you have both bridges in place. So Route 177 Bridge in place, as well as this new proposed bridge. And then two other feature scenarios, scenario, what we call scenario three is if, for some event, the Route 177 Bridge is out of commission, and you don't, you know, we don't build this new connection, what would happen? And then the fourth scenario being a condition where the Route 177 Bridge is out of commission, but you do have this other new bridge in place. So just to, this, this slide sort of captures what we've been seeing so far. Overall, we've, we've been able to identify those overall benefits in terms of traffic operations, not just locally, but on a regional perspective. Clearly, there is going to be a shifting of traffic patterns with this new bridge because obviously, traffic that was previously using only Route 177 now have an alternative route to, to use. And so this graphic here sort of captures what, what we've noticed, and probably stand here. So really, the green is with the second bridge in place, with this Monty Drive Bridge in place. The green color shows roadways that are going to experience sort of a reduction, a reduction in traffic because of the shifting, okay? And, and then what we see in the sort of the yellow or the brown are those intersections or those roadways that are going to now attract more volume. That's not to say that they're not going to operate at an acceptable level of service. All we're saying is there's going to be a shifting of, of traffic patterns as a result of this new Monty Drive Bridge. And so as Russ was alluding to, you can see that on, and this is right here, Route 177, so Unionville Center, you see in green because there's going to be a reduction in traffic in that center. Additionally, Route 10, Farmington Center, you're going to see some form of a reduction in, a shifting of traffic and reduce traffic volumes within the center. And then with the new bridge, which is between 27 and 5 here, those intersections is going to attract more traffic, a shifting of traffic. But again, I need to stress here that that's not to say that there's going to be congestion. All, all we're saying is that there's going to be a shifting because of this new bridge. But overall, there's going to be a benefit in terms of local traffic flow, but also in terms of regional travel as well. So in terms of next steps, we talked about now moving into developing alternatives. We have completed our traffic evaluation. It's been reviewed by the town and, and CROG, and then we're also going to forward it to Connecticut DOT to also review as well. So it's got, it's going to have different levels of review to make sure that there are no missteps. So we'll develop alternatives concepts for the two touchpoints at the new bridge and Route, New Britain Avenue, and then also the new bridge at Farmington Avenue, as Roger talked about. And then all that will feed into what we call a purpose and need statement. And in that purpose and need statement, what is key is really identify the benefits of the study of this new bridge, which is improved connectivity locally, but also regionally, reduce congestion in Unionville Center and Farmington Center. Really build up the resiliency of the transportation system, where with this second bridge or this alternate bridge, you have something to, instead of just relying on the Route 177 Bridge. So there's some resiliency that is going to build in the transportation system. Emergency response is key. You have the police station in the New Britain Avenue area. Just having this connection over the river to be able to come, you know, to this side of, of the river, and you know, really be able to quickly respond to emergencies, that's also a key benefit from this study. And then really getting other connectivities from a pedestrian and bicyclist standpoint. Russ talked a little bit about the trail at Oak Ridge, that connection, you know, just going down the river, that's key, and also transit improvements. And so we, we see the study really as really having overall benefits, not just from a vehicular standpoint, but for, for all travel modes as well, both locally and regionally. And so in terms of key dates and where we are, we, in November, are hoping to have a public informational meeting where we will present all these findings to the public to really get buy-in from everybody. And then in December, have a final study report that we would then be able to then take to the next step of actual design and implementation. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and I'll have Russ take over. Thank you.
Okay. I guess it's time for questions, and I think we have a question here in the audience.
Any questions? Do you have any questions? Okay. Yeah, I'll start at Farin, Johnny will work away across.
In this study, did you guys look at level of service for each of the intersections and grade them accordingly? And did any of them change, especially because we're shifting some of the traffic onto, obviously, New Britain Avenue? I gotta imagine the level of service dropped maybe on the 177, New Britain Avenue, but looking at that new intersection, how that works, what would be the level of service of that intersection right at each end of the bridge? And how does that vary from what it is today? I know there's no intersection on the New Britain Ave side, but at least on the Monty and Route 4 side.
Okay. Yeah, so you're right. Because of the shifting, there's going to be changes in the level of service. What we've noticed is at those intersections where there's a drop, we feel that, and those intersections will still operate acceptably with the drop. Specifically, for those two intersections at either side of the new bridge, we haven't gotten to the level of detail in terms of determining the level of service at those locations because we are going to be looking at that as we develop alternatives, because the alternatives that we come up with should be alternatives that are going to work in the year 2050. Okay? So that's, that's where we are now. We will ultimately develop an analysis for those two intersections, but that would be in concert with determining how many turn lanes do you, do you need if, in case we want to go with a traffic signal. But there are other options that we'll be looking at as well for those two intersections.
Okay. Thank you.
Rafina?
So level of service means an intersection of light, a stop sign? Is that what we're talking about?
Level of service is how quick, quickly you proceed through the intersection.
Okay. All right. I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So I love this idea. We've been talking about traffic in Farmington for as long as I've moved here, which was a really long time ago. How does this help the traffic coming into town from Route 84? So if you're coming the other way, and you could be there, and we've talked about this, it's my favorite question, randomly on a Sunday afternoon, you can't get anywhere because all the traffic is just at that pinch point. How does this bridge kind of mediate that, or does it at all?
It, it won't help that.
Okay.
It won't, just to be perfectly honest with you. It is going to improve during the weekday, during the peak hours. It'll reduce traffic off of Route 4. But as far as like that anomaly on Saturday afternoon at 4 o'clock that I was stuck in, it's, I don't think we can fix that without doing another major project on Route 4.
Is there any thought to doing another major project? Once we get this one all squared away, of course.
I'd like to get through this first. Let's get this funded and paid.
It's just a thought. Okay.
But one thing that said, we have been working with the DOT recently with still the timing of that Route 4 light. We do feel that there's some timing issues, and Route 4, I mean, DOT has told me that they are reviewing it, and they're making some adjustments. And some of the things that they're talking about is the pedestrians going across from Starbucks, that, that's, they're looking at that, and also at the High Street light, and also maybe extending the green from when you're coming, what's it, east to west?
West.
West. Extending that, because we do feel like we've been evaluating it, that there, it does seem like something is off recently, more so than usual. So, and they have said that there are going to be some adjustments coming out. So not to say that that's going to make a huge difference, but we do feel that there is some problems with the timing on Route 4 right now that has, because over the summer, as you've known, seen, usually the traffic is much less in the summer, and that really didn't happen. And we're pretty convinced it's because there's the timing of the lights are off.
Okay. Are we still thinking about doing, like in the mornings, if you've got to drop a kid off the high school, you have to give yourself, if you're coming from, you know, that side of town, at least 45 minutes to like kind of do both? Are we still thinking about doing just the right turn, like a right dedicated turn to that, like you were talking about coming from the other way?
Yes.
Okay.
You have a, you have a right turn lane coming westbound.
Okay.
From, you know, from 84 side.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll have a left turn lane, a longer left turn lane. It'll be 10 times as long.
Okay.
Roughly. So back to your question, Johnny, about level of service, just with those two turn lanes and change in act, this intersection configuration, it's going to improve this tremendously.
Okay. One last question. So we're talking about, you know, there are a couple ways to reduce traffic. You get like new bridge, but you can also take more cars off the road. And I love the idea of transit. What are the ideas that we're thinking about? I know this is a little farther down the line, but could something like that, for example, you know, if there's a bus coming from the 84 side, if people can just jump on, because we have that, what are you laughing? The four-way stop sign?
I'm laughing.
Okay. You're not laughing at me?
Not at all, not at all. I'm laughing about the bus.
Oh, I'm serious?
Yeah.
But the, you know, we have like all that infrastructure right there, right? So if people can just get on at the four-way stop sign, South Road, you know, when you're coming down, park their cars in the lot, and then take the bus, and if they have to go to the library or something.
Absolutely.
Like, you know, especially kids, not kids. If they're old enough, I grew up in New York City, I could hop on the bus and the train when I was 12 years old, but think about the reduction in the number of cars, instead of driving, you know, your kid to the library on Saturday afternoon at 4 o'clock, because they've got to get a book or return a book. I think going forward, thinking about those ideas and trying to reduce the number of cars that are actually coming into town would be huge for, for us.
So I was smirking about the school bus, is what I was thinking about, was a school kid.
That's another subject altogether. Let's leave that alone.
That's where I went. I apologize.
Okay.
But no, you're absolutely right. If we can reduce traffic, it would help out tremendously. The one positive thing about Farmington, we're one of the few towns in the valley that gets more traffic into town every day for people coming to work here. So if we can, with the commuter lot and everything, we've had discussions with the Greater Hartford Transit District about re-circulating bus routes now, and come using the bridge in Unionville Center to loop back around and get back out. So those discussions have started to take place, still get more formalized as we go through the process, and once we go through the DOT and as the whole design gets further along, that'll all be part of, a big part of the project.
Right. And Russ, the other thing too, I think it's, it should be noted again about the trail system, because now, like all the high school kids, you can get over the, you can go over the bridge, now you're on the other side. And I think part of the whole plan is to make sure on New Britain Avenue that there's a, a way that people can stay either on a sidewalk, a bike path, or something that could lead like to Tunxus Mead, or could lead down to Oak Ridge, could lead to the trail systems. So you could literally be here at the high school, and if you have something at Tunxus Mead as a high school kid, you could have your bike here and be able to get, get around and just, I mean, it's not going to take that much traffic off the road, but it is, the whole idea is to connect the bridge to the different trail systems and
Right. And the different modes of transportation.
Modes of transportation.
And then with that connection, now you'll be able to get from that trail right over the bridge, you're going to have two large sidewalks, like 10, 12, 10-foot wide sidewalks along with bike lanes to get across the bridge and get up to the campus here. So this is going to offer a multitude of different means and of people to travel.
Okay.
And help out. Very good question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Just, we go back and forth on time from all the time. So obviously, the next step after that would be going back to DOT State. Then what would be the next level after that? They have to rubber stamp all the bridge designs? How much does the state DOT get involved with CROG? Are they working together?
We work hand in hand together, along with the consultants. So the process is, we got to go through, have the public information, well, tonight, have council accept the study, go to the public informational meeting, send it to the DOT, and then we start looking for, you know, means of funding. And that's where our good buddy Roger comes into play.
And CROG.
And the easy job.
And the, right.
And then what's the funding? Then it's the whole design.
Then we start the design.
Then we just start the design phase.
Correct.
All right. And just want to make sure with CROG, so obviously, if the bridge does happen over the couple of years, 177 Bridge now becomes a major issue, there's no ideas like, hey, we got a New Britain Avenue Bridge, we can, you know, shut down Unionville Center Bridge, yada, yada, and let that sit forever because we gave you a, a third bridge at Monty.
That is
Never happening.
Not going to happen.
Perfect.
But what it does do, Joe, is you bring up a good point, is with, if, and Quacey talked about it as well, if something happens to the 177 Bridge.
There isn't.
During, we've experienced in our lifetime, if there's a flood and we have to actually shut that structure down.
Right.
We have an alternative bypass around, through Unionville, instead of up and around River Road to Route 4 and back down through here.
Yeah.
And as we did notice and experienced, you know, when that water came up that high, we were minutes away from evacuating Unionville Center.
What year was that? That was 2011?
11.
11.
Yeah. So, but it, but it opens up a lot more advantages for us, not only, you know, locally, but regionally. So during an emergency.
I just wanted to make sure, like, yeah, like you got third bridge, we can push this project now to the bottom of the list, because this is over here.
No, no. That's still the corridor, traffic corridors.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you add to that?
Yeah.
Just, we did have, also have a meeting with the Connecticut DOT Bridge Unit, and they are supportive of the project. I mean, this, this additional bridge does add resiliency to the whole transportation network. And, you know, the 177 Bridge is a trust structure. If there's major rehabilitation to that structure, you know, that, that can't be done easily due to this type of steel structure that it is, it can't be staged easily and that sort of thing, major construction down the road. So that sort of thing, major construction down the road. So, there aren't any plans with DOT for anything other major on that structure, but in general, they're very supportive of the Monty.
Thank you.
Keith?
I had a couple of questions that, just point of clarification that I think we probably went over, I just want to make sure that are stated. So, the point of this as a regional study is the hope is that this is determined to be a regional need, so that the burden of paying for this third bridge is not going to fall entirely on the backs of Farmington taxpayers, correct?
100%.
So, the goal in doing all this is that we're, we're doing this for this central region, and we're all going to be sort of a part of that?
Correct.
Okay. We talked about the flood of 2011, and I, my one question is, I know portions of New Britain Avenue were flooded out at that point. I don't recall where that was in conjunction with where this entrance was. This bridge would still be?
High and dry.
Okay, high and dry, up to like Red Oak and that whole area would still be accessible to this bridge?
Oh, 100%. Yeah, so basically, the travel pattern will be up through Oak Ridge.
Cool, okay.
New Britain Avenue did flood by the police station, actually.
And then
In the night.
This is just another, just making sure that I, I fully understand. The, on that map, the yellow regions that would see higher traffic levels after the bridge is placed, can you just state what those roads are? Is that a silly thing to have you guys do? I just want to make sure that we all know exactly what it is.
Right there. We're fighting each other.
Yeah, so. Okay. Okay, so, this is Brickyard Road, I do four, so that's this one, and so it's Brickyard Road, part of Route 4 here, and then this is the post bridge. This is New Britain Avenue. I believe this is Meadow.
Okay.
This is Maria, and then this is part of Route 177 going to town.
No, I don't need to point my, my house is, thank you.
[laughing]
I just wanted to make sure I was reading that map the right way. So, so one of the areas is that Meadow Road up to Red Oak and New Britain Avenue, we expect that to see more traffic. And then, the, yeah, my main concern, I think a lot of people's concern would just be to not move one problem to another. I know you guys are working on that. I told, I understand that, I'm putting the cart in front of the horse and all that. I just, we, I feel like as a, in Unionville, we really feel like we just fixed that Plainville Avenue, New Britain Avenue light with that right turn signal. It's so much easier to get downtown now at five o'clock. It used to be impossible.
Right.
And it works now. And so, I love putting this third, I, I, the idea of the third bridge is certainly appealing to me as someone who's lived in town forever. I just don't, I don't want to take, you know, displace one problem, push it over somewhere else. I know you guys are working on that. I just want to make sure we're all.
100%. And it, when we say increase in traffic, it's not going to become, like New Britain Avenue is not going to become Route 4.
Yeah.
By any means. But we can't sit here and say, everything's going to be great, all traffic is going to go away.
Things would cha, things would change, yeah.
And as Kwesi kept saying, it's going to be a shift.
Yeah.
But it's still the same number of cars, it's the same number of traffic, people traveling, it's just a matter of where they are.
Yeah.
And how they get there.
And then this is my only, I, I live in that area, so I want to be full disclosure. People in Oak Ridge who I've spoken with are concerned about that they could lead more people up through there. I know that's a big cut through, and to go through Oak Ridge does not save anybody a lick of time. People still do do it. And then my road is Coppermine Road, and that is a cut through as well.
Right.
So, there's just some concerns in those side streets to make sure that those don't become, go from being quiet neighborhoods to, to well-traffic roads. And again, I know you guys are working on all that. I'm not asking for promises or assurances right now, but it's something that I'll probably pass to you about 100 more times.
And part of it is, it's part of the study, as it progresses through design, the intersections will all get looked at.
Okay.
And we're working with CROG right now as a, to put a grant, a full grant package in with the federal DOT for improvements on 177, Maria, and Meadow.
Yeah.
Because that's on our, that's been on the stip for a while of, we need right turn, dedicated turn lanes, left turn on Meadow, left turn on Maria.
Yeah.
So, this funding program came out, and we're working with CROG, and it's a regional program that there's five, five, six total, right? Five towns, yeah, one drop. So, five towns total are putting in about a $25 million grant application to the DOT to address that intersection. But as this, our design goes forward, if we have to improve other intersections such as Coppermine and Plainville Avenue, that's going to be, that could be part of it, or a planned future project.
Yeah.
To make those improvements.
And the other concern was residents on, on Red Oak, because people hit that intersection, go through, and then hit the gas. And again, we'll get there when we get there. But I appreciate everybody's time, and thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thank you.
Ed?
Yep. First of all, thank you for your presentation. Very informative. I think the, having that additional emergency response, that faster emergency response, especially being able to get to the high school where we have our students, I think that's really important. I like how you laid out the potential reduced traffic in Unionville Center and Farmington Center. My question for you is, you said the, the study you were doing was going out to 2050. What assumptions were you making in terms of population growth and additional cars on the roads between now and that time period?
So, I'll let Roger answer, but just one quick statement. I got to be honest with you. Talking about 2050 makes me feel very old.
[laughing]
When we started, when I started, we were talking about traffic in 2020.
Right.
You know, and we're like, oh my God, it's 2020. Now, we're talking 2050. So, with that said.
So, CROG does have a regional traffic model that, that we have, it's, it's quite large, beyond the CROG region even, up like towards Springfield and, and a larger area. So, the model is built basically on census data. Basically, it looks at where people live and where people work, and then it assigns trips, and then it has the roadway network in there. And so, based on that, we get base three-hour data that then we've, our CROG modeler has then given to our consultant, and then they drill down with the more detailed level of service at each intersection to come up with, you know, a level of service ranking, A, B, C, D, E, F. So, the projection, you know, right off the top of my head, you know, how, how that's projected escapes me exactly. The number is how we get to 2050. But we have an, it's a, it's a, we have a modeling program, and I don't, I can't tell you the details on the, you know, percentage increases and projections of, right now.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were taking that into consideration.
Yeah.
It sounds like we are, and it sounds like you have a model that you've used in other projects as well.
Right. This is the regional model that we, we work with, ConDOT accepts it, and it's a, and we've chosen the 2050 year. We can also model for 2040, but right, 2050 is like, it catches me off guard too.
So, so just to add to that, yeah, so Roger is correct. I mean, we use the CROG model, we got information from there. But typically, models like that, socioeconomic data, where people work and, and live, but there's also historic data, ambient traffic growth as part of that, that projection as well. What we also did as part of the study is, after getting the information from the CROG model, we also ended up including some projected traffic volumes from some local projects, like for instance, the high school project that is ongoing. We were able to get some information because we actually working on the, on the, on the study, the traffic study for that as well. And that was also included in terms of the future projection. So, we made sure that we, we covered all our bases in terms of what the model is saying, but also what are some of the local projects that are being implemented, and what traffic those projects are going to bring. All that was factored into our analysis.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Brian?
Well, the fun thing about going last is you guys asked all the great questions. But I want to say thank you very much for everything you presented. Kwasi, you hit my buzzword, which is not traffic, but congestion, which is what we experience at those high traffic times, when everyone's trying to get to one place. So, I love the idea of the dedicated turn lanes. And my question, Russ, which you answered, was can we expand the dedicated turn lanes around to some of those yellow areas to keep traffic moving so we don't have the congestion, which obviously you're doing.
Correct.
So, I appreciate that, and that your model is looking at, I mean, this region is growing. We have some growth here in Farmington, but all the surrounding towns are growing as well, which I know you're including as well. But thank you for this, and I look forward to hearing more about how the present, the, the traffic or the congestion is going to be reduced or addressed, you know, to improve, you know, traffic flow through the region, which is really what I'm interested in hearing. And I, I really love the idea of an additional bridge for all the reasons we've discussed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it. Just a couple of things, as has been mentioned, the emergency services, I think, is critical. You know, you were talking about 2011 when the bridge was, you know, just on the edge, emergency responders getting through there, you just ended that, and you increased the amount of time to get anyone back to safety and help them out. So, that's, that's kind of critical. You mentioned acceptable levels of service. Certainly, we could argue that every day people are saying, what we have now is not acceptable. So, I'd love to get to acceptable levels of service everywhere, which is great. Talking about, you know, the buses, maybe we could get the kids used to riding the buses now, so when they grow up in 2050, they'll want to keep riding the buses. Just a thought.
Listen, I'll put all three of mine on the web, and all of like 12 Johnnys. We're good.
Hey, if we can do it on this table for you young folks, that'd help us out a lot. So, those are, you know, the, the bridge questions that Joe was talking about on the Unionville Bridge also. I think that, and I think, Roger, you were sort of alluding to that, that can only help any repairs or needed work being done on that bridge if we have an alternate, versus this summer, when they're just trying to paint the bridge, and you're down to almost unpassable. So, we'd avoid that problem when we're doing any work on it. So, that's, that's all very good. Looking at the assumptions for 2050, the only thing I didn't hear you talking about was flying cars, because, you know, I think George Jetson is supposed to be born this year in 2022, so we must be on the way for that. So, no, other than that, I think great presentation. Thank you for it all. I'm looking forward to November when we can get the public out.
Thank you. And I, one thing I want to do is, publicly, I want to thank Roger and Kwesi and their group. It's been, it's easy to work with people who are dedicated to the traffic problems in, you know, in the region. And it is, I can, I can call, I can email, I can text, and get a response in minutes. And I just want to, you know, publicly thank them both for their efforts and their team, because truly, it's a team membership here if, and they, they work tirelessly for us. And that, you know, I push a lot in Farmington for us, I have to admit, and they respond, and I appreciate it. I want them to know I appreciate it. But for the region as a whole, but they do a great job. So, I just want to say thank you to them as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
There you go. One bus rider up here. That's right. Okay, we move on to, item D, public hearing, having none. Item E, new items, seeing none. We will move on to public comment. We will begin with the public here with us today. Then we will move to our online public. For anyone who would like to speak from the audience today, please state your name and address, and try and keep your comments limited to five minutes if you can.
Good evening. Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. I didn't plan to speak this evening, but it was a tremendous presentation, and it's nice to see a bridge project actually moving forward. I've been to town over 30 years. So, I've, I've dealt with every bottleneck imaginable going in each direction. However, it looks like the particular flow here is really kind of designed to bring traffic down Brickyard Road from Avon, Simsbury, whatever, get them across the river without creating too many bottlenecks, and then get them up to 177 or Route 6 and off to Trump or ESPN or wherever they work, right? But, you know, the temptation being what it is as a commuter, if you come across that bridge and hit New Britain Avenue, if you turn left, you're just going back to Unionville, which is not a good choice, and there's just a Cantina and a liquor store. If you turn left, you're heading towards Meadow Road and intersection with New Britain. So, I guess first of all, I'm assuming we'd have to put in a traffic light and some expense to improve that intersection, right? Which today is just stop signs where everybody stops and looks at each other. But the other concern I would have, and I live in the Oak Ridge neighborhood, I heard some of this earlier, so I'll just extend the questioning, which is, as you're going down New Britain Avenue, you're going to get a couple jump-off points. And we know how people are when they're late and commuting and under pressure. So, one is Oak Ridge, right, to try and beat the numbers going through that. And you got to drive pretty hard to do that, and people will. And we do have a wheelchair community up there as well. So, I mean, it gets a little crazy even without the bridge today at times. And then, of course, cutting up Coppermine past Walnut Farms and trying to cut the hypotenuse there. So, I'd be interested in seeing what the traffic impact study is with those two cut-throughs. And, you know, if you're from the village, you'll understand this by looking at, say, Garden Street, High Street, and the issues you've seen there. So, I, I don't want to kind of fix one problem and create a couple others. And so, you know, I would really be looking for the impact statement on those two neighborhoods specifically, because, and certainly with all the electronic devices everyone's got in their cars and their hands today, you know, they're going to see those options come up, right? And so, that would be very important to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And I would like to say, I think it's been a long time since we've heard anyone use hypotenuse in a public meeting. So, thank you for that. Any other public here with us today?
Yes. Hi, how's it going? Andre Simons, 86 Helm Drive. I just wanted to submit my testimony regarding a critical issue that I think that the town council should be addressing, especially because it has proven to be harmful or even fatal for some of our residents, which is sidewalks, believe it or not. Our town really doesn't provide sidewalks near some of the busier locations that we, we are privy to, like West Farms Mall, Five Corners, and even at Tunksis in certain locations. I personally have almost been hit at Tunksis, so I can say that. And my mother, who will also be testifying later, has almost been hit on Woodruff. And as a person that's involved with the deaf community, I have actually knowledge of multiple other deaf individuals that are in the town. And I do know of those individuals taking walks on Woodruff, and taking walks on South, and taking walks in all of those areas, and trying to avoid the cars. And I challenge any one of you to do that with earplugs. So, it's definitely a critical thing. I don't want to be a person that just comes up here and just complains and doesn't bring a solution. Fortunately, I am privileged to work for the Office of Policy and Management, and I kind of was looking at funding avenues that you could possibly take advantage of, just because I know that it is always tough to come up with the costs. And when I talked with experts up there, LoSIP seemed to be the best avenue, and then going into bonding if LoSIP wasn't an option. Bonding, obviously, is a longer process, LoSIP being more immediate. There's a reimbursement period of three months, as many of you probably know. I do think that would probably be the best avenue. And fortunately also, there is a neighboring town, it was Shelton, that just had a sidewalk project. And for a mile of sidewalk, it is about $87,000. And in fiscal year '21, I believe, Farmington was billed $138,000 for LoSIP. So, the money is there if everything is reallocated. I do know that there are town bylaws that kind of prohibit the town in some senses from being able to put these down, because it puts the cost onto the homeowner. But for some of those areas near West Farms or any of the other areas I mentioned, they're publicly owned land. They're under the bridge in Woodruff, which nobody owns, and it would be unfair to put that burden onto any of the local residents, especially when other people in the town probably would be enjoying that same pleasure walking around there. I just wanted to wrap up with that, but I really appreciate your time, and thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, Andre.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Dorian Simons. I'm a resident at 86 Helm Drive, and Andre is my son. I've lived there since 1998, and during that time, I've driven around. It's very convenient, but after my heart surgery, my doctors told me that I have to walk and that I have to get my steps in. And I've always wondered, where am I able to safely walk? I've, walking on the grass even on Woodruff with all the litter and broken glass, and it, it's so hard. So, I tried to walk on the road, and there were actually people that drove by and called me crazy for walking on the road, because I'd be hit. I have lived there and I feel like I have my right to access, and I feel like I should be able to walk there conveniently. I've seen several of my neighbors who are elderly or just everyday citizens, it's not just me, there are multiple other people. And Joe, I know you have two brothers that are deaf, and they're walking around in that area too, and I've talked to your brother, and he's carefully walked on the grass and sometimes he has difficulty. I don't mean to call you out specifically, Joe, but I, I know your brother, which is the only reason I'm saying that, but I, I'm a blunt person, I really think that this is very important. And I, I've tried to call the town manager and talk about this, and I've sent letters, and I know that it, it can be a little bit tough going through those channels. So finally, I am able to make the comment here, and I appreciate that the town managers' just as a comment, were able to paint white lines on Woodruff. But the thing is, it's such a narrow line, and I would have to almost walk it like, like a tightrope, just to even adhere to walking in a safe zone almost. It's not even walkable in that sense. So it becomes even worse when I try to walk to even Holy Family, which does have a paved sidewalk area, and there's a curve, and my sister, who is hearing, tried to drive over and she almost hit her. It, it was shocking, and my sister told me that I was insane for just walking on the road, but there were several times I've almost been hit, and it's, it's definitely a concern. So I, I'm really looking for my right to accessibility, especially because I am deaf, and it is very hard for me to hear and see what's going on, so there needs to be some consideration in respect to that. So I, I've been frustrated with this, and I appreciate your consideration with my comment, but I felt that was the best way to frame it, and thank you for listening.
And thank you for coming out, we appreciate that. Mike?
Good evening. My name is Mike D'Amico. I live at 6 Deborah Lane. I'm also the state representative for the 21st District. Mr. Chair, I'm very disappointed that I wasn't able to hand out a citation. You promised me I was going to hand out a citation today, but that's okay.
I can make them show up, Mike.
Okay. So I, I want to just briefly address an item that's on the town manager's report for, for today's agenda, having to do with the Parsons property. Sadly, I, I think it's fair to say that that two and a half acre parcel of land is probably the most scrutinized two and a half acres in the whole town of Farmington, or at least that's been the case for the last couple of years. But be that as it may, I, I just wanted to give a, a brief legislative perspective on, on this whole thing. So, you know, as you can see from the town manager's report, which, which is, you know, very informative, I just wanted to add a little bit to that. So it, I, I think that the council members, as, as well as the general public, should be aware that the, my, my legislative colleagues and myself, we have introduced three different pieces of legislation over the last several years with regards to this two and a half acre parcel of land. One in 2015, one in 2019, and another in 2021. And, and we're, we're certainly willing to introduce another piece of legislation in 2023, because I'm anticipating that's what we're going to need to do, based on, on the report from the town manager here. And I'm, we're happy to do it. So in 2015, we, we were asked to, to introduce legislation that, that would guarantee that the town of Farmington would, would get that, you know, Parsons parcel, so that it wouldn't, it wouldn't go to the state to be used, you know, for, for garage purposes or, you know, any other purposes, and that it wouldn't go to a developer. The town wanted to make sure that the town of Farmington got that property. So in 2015, we, we introduced legislation, which, which made it through the process. It was Special Act 15-1, and, and it indicated that, that, that the, the state would, would convey that property to the town of Farmington at a cost equal to the fair market value of the property. So then, subsequent to that, as, as you're all aware, I'm sure, there, there was much public discussion, we had charrettes and public meetings, and there was a committee, I think there might have been at least maybe one or two gateway committees, at least one, dealing with that parcel, as well as the immediate area, the gateway area. There was discussion about potential contamination of that property, potential remediation of the, of the contamination. So a couple of years later, in 2019, the legislative delegation was asked to introduce, to introduce more legislation, another piece of legislation, that, that modified the 2015 legislation and took out the language regarding fair market value. And I think that had, and again, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but I think it had to do with, you know, whether we're going to use it for commercial purposes or civic purposes, or what, what the ultimate use would be. So that was the second piece of legislation that made it through the process and became law. So then, as, as you're aware, Mr. Chair, in, in, in late 2020, the, the town received correspondence from the DOT, which indicated that, or recommended that, that Special Act 15-1 from the year 2015 be repealed. So we, my legislative colleagues and I introduced a third piece of legislation in 2021, which repealed the 2015 and the 2019 language. The town manager came and testified, you know, at, at the committee hearing level. And so that was, so that legislation went through based on the recommendation of the town, as well as the Department of Transportation. So now we, my, again, as the town manager reports, in, in, in her report tonight, there was recently a meeting where the, the DOT said that they were not permitted to convey the Parsons property to the town of Farmington through an internal transfer process, which is, which is what was anticipated. So now we are faced with the prospect of introducing a fourth piece of legislation, which is fine, that's what we do. I, I just, you know, wanted to give the, the council members some kind of, you know, a, a little bit of a history, that we've, we've gone back and forth with this, you know, based on conversations with the DOT and with the town and so forth. But if a fourth piece of, fourth piece of legislation is required, we will be happy to do it and shepherd it through the process, and hopefully, the fourth time will be the charm. So that's my perspective on the whole thing, and I think it just adds a little bit to what was, you know, included in the town manager's report. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I ask a question, please?
We don't generally ask questions during public comment, but we will be discussing this topic a little later.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item G.
We have someone Zoom, CJ.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Public on the phone, yes.
Yes, so we have Portia Corbett.
Okay, Portia, you're on. Can you hear us?
I think you're muted.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Portia Corbett, 11 and 21 Mountain Spring Road. As you all know, I don't have to restate this, but I will, for the record, we've been dealing with this, as Mike said, for the Farmington Historical Society since 2015. The Phineas Lewis House, which is a historical home, we agreed to take it, to store it after the developer couldn't store it anymore, there was a, a deal there with the state, and possibly put it on our property with, we bought one Mountain Spring Road, to put it on that property and to gain egress and ingress over a setback that the Historical Society owns on the Parsons property. So what happens? We put the house in storage, we're up to $8,000 that we have spent on this so far, under the impression that whatever is going to happen there is going to happen. And now I have dozens, if not conversations and emails from CJ, Kathy, Brian Conley, Mike D'Amico, who else? There's, well, I've spoken to Russ about it, but no, no emails from Russ. But now I'm trying to get my head around what's happening here. Mike just gave us a background of what's happening. My last, in, my last impression from the town was last year, our last impression, I should say, was that the governor signed something and that we were just waiting for a deed to come through. And that had to go through DOT, and the deed was coming through. That doesn't seem to be the case. I mean, that seems to be that DOT somehow said, no, we're not doing this. My questions would be, and I'm asking this now, because I'm not sure I can comment or ask questions later, my questions would be, when you repealed it, which we never even understood that that was a repeal, it's not in any of my emails, I went back through everything and, and looked at that, when it was repealed, what was the direction that you received at that time, and what to do with, did you get it from DOT? Did you get it from the governor's office? Because he signed it. I mean, what was, what were you supposed to do at that point? Just give it to the DOT and the DOT say, okay, we're going to run with this, and we're going to do the deed, and, and, and then you can approve it, and then we're okay? And if that's the case, what happened in the last year, when no one knows what was happening, it seems? It was, I was told it was with the AG's office, I was told it may be still with the governor's office, we were told that it was anywhere, but no one knew where it was. So those are my questions. As much, I read, Kathy, I read your explanation at the end, and, and it is what it is, but there's a lot of questions that we have there on what happened and what do you do now? So if you're going to have to bring this back to legislation, are you talking next April? Over the same issue? And then we have to spend more money keeping this? We've never asked the town for anything, and which you know, as, all we do is for the town, and we're a nonprofit. So I, I, I'm, we're very frustrated, and we don't understand how something, as Mike said, two and a half acres, which is not even two and a half acres when you count our setback that we have against it, what, why can't that just be? And don't just say DOT, because it, it can be a lot of DOT, but I want to know what you expected was going to happen, what you were told was going to happen, and if they reneged on absolutely everything they told you, that were they, was someone stupid, was someone not working? What was happening in the DOT that they didn't tell you the, what was going to happen? And what was the right course of action for Farmington to take to get this done? Because now we've lost a whole nother year, and to us, we've lost another $2,000. So that's my question, and thank you.
Great, thank you, Portia. Do we have any other speakers online?
No.
No other questions online?
No.
Mr. D'Amico, while you're still here, did you hear the?
Yeah, I was going to say, oh, you, I'm sorry. Do you feel with Mike still here, maybe we could just have the discussion about it right now?
We could move it up to this point.
Right, so just a couple of things that I agree with Mike's synopsis of the beginning part of, that is absolutely what happened. Between 2015 and 2019, if the council remembers that, we were doing charrettes and things of that nature, and the thought was, is that the town would be using the property for economic development purposes. And that, the reason for that, is why we would be getting it for the fair market rate, because my understanding is, is that if we were going to be using it for economic development purposes, we would have to pay fair market, fair market value for the property. I think between 2015 and 2019, the first original language, I think tied our hands a little bit more, and that's why we had to go back in 2019 to, to change the language a little bit. So during all that period of time, we were thinking about doing it as economic development purposes, we had our committees. And then, starting in 2020, we had a new council, and we set up an ad hoc committee to talk about the Parsons property. And by that period of time, it had come to our attention, one is that we had already gone out for an RFP, we didn't seem to be getting a lot of interest in it, and whether or not the council, did they want to shift direction and possibly not use this property as economic development, but to use it as open space, but we were calling it as modified open space. So we'd have a welcome center, the historic house would be on it, the potential for another historic house, and this ad hoc committee got together and we talked about it. Part of this ad hoc committee was also the sidewalk implementation plan on Main Street on Route 10. So we also needed a phasing plan, so the ad hoc committee got together, and the first thing they did was talk about what they were going to do on Main Street, and we had that public hearing, and we did that. In the meantime, the ad hoc committee asked CJ to go back to the DOT and see if there was any interest in the DOT conveying the property to, to the town of Farmington. So in November of 2020, CJ and Russ Arnold went to the DOT and asked if there was any interest of potentially conveying the property to the town of Farmington at $1,000 is the usual rate, and we would not be doing it as economic development, but as open space. We received a letter in November 17th, 2020, after CJ and Russ met, I think it was by Zoom at that time, saying, yes, the state of Connecticut would convey the property to the town of Farmington for $1,000 for open space, but what we had to do is that we had to repeal 2015 and 2019, because those were to get it for fair market rate. So at that time, we have a document in writing that says that the DOT was going to convey the property to the town of Farmington. That's in November of 2019. Then in May, I mean, I'm sorry, that is in November of 2020. In May, I testified, Mike D'Amico testified, and we went to support the repeal, and that was, we did that on the direction of the DOT, so that we can get the property through, I call it an administrative transfer, and that's what we were directed to do. So that's what we did. From July 2021 to July 2022, the process to convey the town, to convey the land through the administrative process was in the DOT's hands. Our understanding, the governor signed something sometime after, no, on July 13th, the Special Act was signed, and then, so to us, it was moving forward. We have numerous emails from the state of Connecticut, saying we're working on the deed language. The town followed up, gave them the deed language, which was, again, modified open space, a welcome center, moving a historical house, working with the Historical Society. We had numerous conversations, we were told that things were moving along in the process, and that was starting in July of 2021. We continually followed up as, and, but it was as Portia Corbett said, sometimes we were told it was in the AG's office, sometimes we were told that it was somewhere in an administrative process, but we did not know where it was, but we were told that it was still happening. Then, as of July of this year, we got a call from the deputy commissioner of DOT requesting a meeting. We had a meeting with the deputy commissioner, and he said that we were told, basically in error, that we could, they could convey the property to us through an administrative means. So for the year, they, we were told, we have a document that said we were told that we could do it, and in July, we got a, a meeting with the deputy commissioner, and for whatever reason, which I'm not sure what the reason is internally, it was that it was done in error, and they were not able to convey the town through an administrative process. So that is where we are. They were told if we still wanted it as open space, we could go and go to, through the legislative process again, for the one, two, three, I think, fourth time. And so when you ask the question, I do not know what happened and why the DOT told us that it was able to do it, and then at the end of the line, they were, we were told that it was not allowed to do that. So that's maybe something, Mike, you could answer for us, but I think that's the summary of where we are with the Parsons property.
Mike, do you want to add anything at all? Do you want to add anything at all to that, or respond to anything?
No, I really don't have anything to add.
Okay.
I don't know the reason why I wasn't at that meeting in July, so.
Fair enough. Yeah, we're fine to go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was curious. So when we're talking about a conveyance, so the town of Farmington would own the property outright, this wasn't like a lease or anything like that, right? The deed would be ours, as if we owned the property, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so was the distinction and the difference in, like, when we changed, we went from, you know, the economic
No, I really don't have anything to add. I don't know the reason why I wasn't at that meeting in July, so.
Fair enough, yeah, Rafina.
Yeah, I was, I was curious. So when we're talking about a conveyance, so the town of Farmington would own the property outright? This wasn't like a lease or anything like that, right? The deed would be ours as if we owned the property, correct? Okay, so was the distinction and the difference in, like, when we changed, we went from, you know, the economic development portion to the open space portion? Did that somehow change what would happen to the conveyance?
They only offered to convey us the property if it was used for modified open space. If we were to try and develop the property, they would gladly sell it to us for $2 million.
And I'm assuming $2 million was out of our budget?
$2 million is about double what we appraised it at back in 2015.
I was being facetious, it's two and a half acres of land. I don't think anybody would be buying that. It'd be like the Brooklyn Bridge. Okay, so, the other one, yes. So like, where do we, like, we have the history. Where do we go from here is really the thing. I don't think anybody wants to wait another year or more to go through the legislative process. Is there a decision maker that we can have come? Or, you know, Mike, can we like have you go and knock on some doors or break some legs or something? Again, Brooklyn, sorry.
Is it okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Rafina. Look, i- if it requires legislation, then it's going to have to happen, you know, starting in January. Because legislation doesn't meet again until, until January of 2023. If there's a way to do this without legislation, I'll be happy to try to track that down. I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold my breath on that one. Especially since the DOT seems to be convinced that that's what we need to do, is go through the legislative process. But if there is another way, I will, I will try to find out. Yeah, because I, I don't want this to get delayed a- any more than anybody else does. So if that's what you would like me to do, I will be happy to see if we can do it another way. But if it's going to require legislation, unless the governor or the legislative leaders call a special session to deal with the Farmington two and a half acre parcel, which I don't anticipate will happen, I think you're going to have to wait till January. So that's the long and the short of it, so.
That seems to be what was indicated to us.
Sorry, Kathy, from your perspective, would we, as a town with this parcel, be in a better position now had we never repealed that initial bit of legislation before?
You mean, just recently?
Just recently.
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, we had to repeal it or we were going to have to pay market value for it.
Okay, gotcha. So, so the time wasted between that legislation and then having this repealed by the, this repeal decision by the DOT, that was already kind of burnt time anyway. That wouldn't have done us any good to be there. So we were, you know?
Right, no, I mean.
I just wanted to make sure, because it does, it feels like we were told one thing. Not feels like, we were told one thing and then this other thing happened. And then it also just feels like our time has been kind of wasted going down different avenues. But it sounds like some of that is just big to the cake.
Yeah, I think, I mean, definitely from July of 2021 to July of 2022 is definitely just time that it was sitting at the DOT. The time before that was, you know, when we went, we got the letter and that really, there wasn't any, the committee was still working. You know, like, we, our committee only made the decision in November and we were just continuing on our process. And then we had to wait till we could go and repeal it, which we did. But in the meantime, we were working on our, the council was approving it. There was a lot of things going on.
Okay, so, couple of comments. First, you, you stated we would have to pay market value. But if you back up, you said $2 million was more than market value. What they were offering was what we thought was double the appraisal that we had gotten.
Our appraisal was a million, the state's was two.
Okay, so it was way more. So to buy it outright, they were asking for close to double or somewhere around there. When you guys sat with the DOT, was there any specific reasons given or just a blanket statement that we, we now need to go the legislative process?
I think that the state, and Mike, you would know better than me, but I think that when the state sees that there's property that has market value to it, it's not as likely to do an administrative type of conveyance because the property has value to it. And that's why, one of the reasons why it only really conveys property when it's open space type of property. But I'm not sure of what the rules at the DOT are that if the actual property that's being conveyed doesn't start as open space, meaning it doesn't have value to start with. So that property has value. They have an appraisal that shows that it has value. And so I'm not certain if the DOT likes to do it administratively, conveying property that has value. That's what my gut instinct would be to that. But that's, I was just, we were basically told that an error had been made and it was not the right way that they could do it.
So I guess my comment, my, my question would be, I guess, Mike is, to kind of dig in and find out what that reason really is. Because to, to go through a year, you know, if they would have just told us back in July, then into 2021, we had the legislative process in this year, that we could have done this and we could be sitting here open, you know, owning the property now.
I would agree, counselor, I would agree.
And, and that said, you know, the, the state has grants for open space. So this idea that they don't convey something because it has value and then they turn around, and I know it's completely different appropriations and the red tape at the government is, you know, 25 times, million times more than what we have here and then some. So I would just ask that you dig in because maybe the cause or the reason of that, maybe we have a better idea of how to get to the heart of it. Because if we don't have an actual reason, then how are we supposed to know what we're doing legislatively? There's got to be some, something that's got to be given either in writing or verbally or some direction of how to proceed. But I think it starts at the heart of the question.
And, and just for clarity, that was, like, the DOT did not tell me that. But we have had, we've worked with DEEP on some land in the past. And that was some of the things that was discussed with me when we were talking about cemetery property. And so, again, I, the DOT did not give that reason to me. I just want to be clear about that. But when I, we were dealing with the DEEP on land, those were some of the things that we talked about. So I'm not sure if that's the same process. So I just want to be clear that that's not what they told me. But that's what I've, that's what I was told with the DEEP.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments, questions? Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Kathy. As a member of that committee, I think everyone on that committee and everyone sitting at this diocese worked really hard to make this happen. We even made some changes to our initial idea of what we wanted to do economically for that property. And we changed it to open space. We did everything in a timely fashion for the, for the state to make this happen for the town of Farmington. And we've taken on burdens in terms of cost for, you know, testing, land testing. You know, our nonprofits are taking on costs for this. So it's really in everyone's benefit to make this happen and to get to the bottom of it. And I know that we have a couple of months now to kind of do our due diligence once again, which we've been doing, to see what we can do to make this happen for the town of Farmington. And we appreciate everything that you've done in accordance with what we've been directed to do by the state. So we seem to have done everything. And if we can find out, do our due diligence as to why this has happened and what we need to do to help, that, that is, really, thank you for that. And I know that everyone here is going to do the same. And I appreciate everything you've done for us, Kathy. And Russ, you as well, I know you have helped. So thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, Brian. I, I'm glad to hear you are in favor of modified open space on that property because we did have discussions on this council questioning whether it should be modified open space, which will mean we will have to have a meeting prior to January to make sure this council agrees we would like that legislation put in. And we are not going to try and develop the busiest intersection in the town.
Yeah, but before we go the legislation route, are we all united in getting some more information? If we were promised something, like for years, we followed all the rules, we did what we were supposed to, and then still at the end of it, we have gone back. How many years now? That's 2015, I can count, right? That's a significant number of time and number of effort wasted and a lot of years. So is there anything, is there like a decision maker that we can? I know, writing a letter to the government, but something. Is there, like, there are a couple of people, here's what we've done. Can you explain to us, as a number of us have already said, why this happened and how we can, is there any, anything that we can do in the interim before we go the legislative route? It was promised at one point.
Again, Mr. Chair, is it okay to, okay? So, so, I mean, I, I will be happy to try to find out the answer to that question. Why, why was the, the, that letter from November of 2020? Why did that turn out to be not accurate? I guess is the best way to phrase it. So I, I will try to find that out. I, I don't, Kathy, I'll work with you to do that or however you want to do this. So I, I think it would be, be good to get an answer to that question. And, and the second thing that I'm hearing from, from the council is that you would like me to see if there's a way we can get this done before January of 2023. I, I wouldn't, again, I wouldn't get too optimistic about that, but, okay. And, and then, then, you know, failing that, we're going to have to do something in the legislative session in 2023, again, for the fourth time. And hopefully that will, you know, be, be the final time. So, yeah, I, I'm willing to, I'm willing to try to find out what, what the, what the problem was there. And however you think is the right way to do it, you know, we could talk about it, but we'll hopefully get some answers.
Okay, now we'll move on. Item G, reading of the minutes.
Yes, I can make a motion to accept the minutes of July 12th, 2022, regular town council meeting.
Second. We have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed and out. Reading of communications and written appeals, do we have any? No communications or written appeals. We'll get a report of committees. 1928 Building Committee.
We had a meeting today. We will be having a second meeting in two weeks before the town council meeting again. But I think we're taking shape to coming back to the council and redeveloping the charge.
Great, thank you, Joe. Farmington High School Building Committee.
So the last meeting we had, it was about a month ago. We reviewed and discussed interior colors and materials, kind of getting some graphics of what the interior would look like. Our bids have all gone out by August 31st. And we should be receiving them all within the next month. So we'll have a better idea from a cost perspective. So maybe not next meeting, D'Amico, not meeting after, I'll be able to bring some additional information on the costing, which I know everybody's so interested in. Our early enabling package is complete. So the stripping of the topsoil, the construction safety fencing, the permanent fencing for the entirety of the project. And also the parking lot down by the library has also been complete. As again, all the information can be found at FHSbuildingproject.org. And our next meeting is actually tomorrow at 5:00.
Great, thank you. Green Efforts Committee.
So we continue to have discussion on the anti-idling and the signs being implemented at the school for school drop off. We've made some headway on the EV charger. We will be, we're selecting to have it installed at the Staples House. There was some electrical complications here at the town hall. So that seemed to be the best place. We're still getting the final cost, but we're told there, they shouldn't be much more than around $10,000, at least, at least at this point. We have held off a little bit because of the construction of that temporary parking lot for FHS. And let's see, we are starting a discussion on native lawns that are starting to pop up around town and, and maybe some of the rules. Because I know the council apparently had discussed this a few years back. And there's more interest in it and we're looking into it as the Green Efforts Committee. Our next meeting is October 4th.
Great, thanks, John. Land Acquisition Committee.
Nothing at this time.
Racial Equality Task Force.
Yes, we will be having a new community conversation series. The next conversation is titled, "I'm a Good Person, Isn't That Enough?" with Speaker Debbie Irving. It will take place 6:00 PM on September 28th at the Meeting House at First Church of Christ. And it'll be streamed online. The event is free, but registration is required. And the next task force meeting scheduled is for September 26th at 6:30.
Great, thank you. We'll now go on to the report of the chair and liaisons, starting with the chair. I would like to address one of the comments, or two of the comments, the Simmons earlier today talking about sidewalks. We have had a number of discussions on sidewalks. We've just completed the Main Street, or we're, excuse me, in the process of completing the Main Street project, which is from Farmington Avenue, getting us out to Highland Park on the one side. And we have been discussing at what point we need to review our sidewalk code really and see if we're looking into that going forward. Because I think we've all discussed at different points in time how critical it is to be able to traverse our town on safe sidewalks. We've got tremendous north-south traveling on the trails, the rails to trails. But that east-west is very difficult. When they paved Farmington Avenue, not too many years ago, we made a request, and we do this with all our state roads, that the travel lanes be as thin as they possibly can so there's more safety on the side, particularly for the bikes. But that Farmington Avenue still does not have sidewalks from end to end of town, which is something that's always kind of disturbed me, that you can't get from one end of town to the other, or for that matter, to the high school, staying on sidewalks. So this is a topic we've discussed. It's certainly not one that's going to be solved tonight, but it is absolutely one that we keep in mind. And I appreciate your coming here and discussing it tonight. So thank you for that. Few other things. The, we heard earlier the presentation on the, the third bridge and the connectivity study. Again, as we mentioned earlier, this is not just traffic, this is safety. And this is also one more way to get to different parts of town safely. The high school students, when they're trying to go to the fields at Tunxus Mead, will use all kinds of creative ways to get there. And even when they need to get to the trail to cross the Big Bird Bridge, there's not an easy access to that. So this would be one more way we can get across the river instead of having to go from end to end of town. So that's the main issues I want to talk about. Just a few issue, or a few events coming up in the near future other than "I'm a Good Person" on September 28th. The Unionville Museum is in the process of a presentation of the history of transportation. And that'll be going on through September 25th. So try and get over there and take a look. The Main Library, tomorrow night at 6:30 is having "The History of Blues with Joey Leon." Sounds like an interesting one. Farmington Polo Club has a very full calendar. You can just go onto their website and see, they've got some movies. They've still got some more car events and coffee with cars, things like that. And then on the 25th of September, I believe that's a Sunday at 9:00 AM, make sure you come out to the 14th Farmington Rotary 5K. Brian and Conley and I both ran in last year, not even coming close to keeping up with Keith, who finished in the top dozen. So hopefully the three of us can be back again this year, if not running, at least cheering everyone else on. So I think Rafina, I saw you there, Joe, I might have seen you there also. So hopefully we get a good showing for that, it's for a good cause. And that is all I have for the chair's report. We will now move on to Conservation Inland Wetlands.
So Conservation Inland Wetlands had a meeting on September 7th. Conservation had no new business, but Inland Wetlands had a public hearing regarding Bulwark LLC, lots 8120 and 8122 on Colt Highway to construct a self-storage facility. There was some concern with the width of the wetlands crossing, among other things. And the public hearing was continued to September 21st. In other business, they also unanimously approved a homeowner's application to clear trees along the property line at 30 Portage Crossing with some conditions. There was also determination of the removal of invasive plants. Russ, within the upland review area along the south side of the Farmington River is a permitted non-regulated operation. They also put some conditions on the removal of the bittersweet along that area and that will be happening at some point.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Board of Education.
That's me also. The first meeting of the school year is next Monday, September 19th at 7:00 PM at Farmington High School. High School. As some of you know, especially the ones with kids in the school system, there have been some administrative personnel changes over the summer. Specifically, East Farms has a new principal. Her name is Jessica Safran, and she started on August 15th. She comes from Bolton Public Schools and Southfield before that. She has expertise in mathematics and curriculum development and implementation that will be super valuable at East Farms and within the district. Dr. Scott Hurwitz, who is our former principal, was appointed to, at Farmington High School, I should say, was appointed to serve as Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations in the district's central office. He was at Farmington High School through last week to help with the start of the school year, and his administrative skills and focus on community building and collaboration will serve the district really well, as he takes on his new role. Russ Christ was appointed the interim principal. He was the assistant principal. And Felicia Poskus was hired as the interim assistant principal. I hope you guys can follow that. If you've got kids, you've already read this, so you know. Felicia comes to our district from Hartford Public Schools and the Windsor Public Schools, as well with expertise in data decision-making and equity and student well-being.
Okay, thank you. Next, the Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee has been busy out on the trails, on their bicycles and hiking. There's a meeting tomorrow night, so we'll report on that next, next meeting. Economic Development Commission.
Yes, the EDC didn't have any meetings in August, but on October 13th, the EDC is hosting an in-person business breakfast event at the Farmington Club. This is going to be featuring Liz Shapiro, Director of Arts Preservation and Museums, at the Connecticut Office of the Arts and State Historic Preservation Office. Liz has had the pleasure of serving as the Director of Arts Preservation and Museums since August 2018. In this position, she directs and coordinates the work of the Connecticut Office of the Arts, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the four historic sites and museums operated by the SHPO. And that would be the Henry Whitfield State Museum in Guilford, the Prudence Crandall Museum in Canterbury, the Eric Sloan Museum in Kent, and the Old Newgate Prison and Copper Mine in East Granby. Liz will present the economic impact of the creative, impact of the creative economy, so join us there on October 13th. And the next EDC meeting is tomorrow, September 14th at 5:30 PM.
Is there breakfast coming up soon?
Yeah, that's the breakfast, is October 13th, that's the event.
Gotcha, thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
There was no meeting in August, but our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, the 20th, at 5:00.
Great. Housing Authority.
So, the Housing Authority has seen an uptick in fair rent housing meetings. And I say an uptick, we haven't had one in over 20 years, I think almost 25 years, and we had six of them in the last month and a half, due to market conditions, some turnover of some of the larger rental properties in town, and the, you know, inflationary issues that we've all seen and heard about and read about, and they're starting to take shape in the rental market.
Great, thank you. Human Relations Commission.
The Human Relations Committee met on July 25th and had an informative presentation by representatives from CHRO and their agency in a discussion about future collaboration, including plans for fair hearings, training through CHRO. Disability Voter Registration Week is next week. There will be social media posts, flyers, and programs similar to last year at New Horizons, and a video at the Senior Center regarding voting rights. They'll also be discussing plans for Human Rights Day, which is December 10th, and who they will be recognizing for the third year. They previously recognized Ruth Groby, and last year recognized the Farmington Valley Health District. The next meeting will be recognizing Zalman Nakomovsky, but that meeting might actually, schedule might move because the 26th is Rosh Hashanah, so it might move to October 3rd. Anybody who's interested in joining the meetings, please double-check the calendar before.
Thank you. Library Board.
Nothing to report.
TPZ.
Town Planning and Zoning met last night. The one item that I'd bring to the council is, there was a significant discussion on the 11, the proposed 11-lot subdivision on 168 Copper Mine Road. There was a big turnout of residents from the West District Road, Red Coat Lane area with concern about water from that development spilling over into their neighborhoods and flooding basements, et cetera. This proposal did make it through wetlands already. It was not voted on last night, but continued to the next meeting, which is Monday, the 27th. And all those meetings are available online, if anybody's interested in participating.
Great, thank you. Unionville Historic.
Yes, the Unionville Historic District Commission met on September 1st. The commission approved a certificate of appropriateness for 1773 Farmington Avenue to add a fence gate over the driveway. This will be a black chain, chain-link fence that is needed for safety, to prevent delivery vehicles from driving further up to the driveway where children may be playing. The commission also reviewed the 75 South Main Street Wayfinder signage proposal in Unionville, so that's where the old, right on the corner there where the old liquor square, the old building used to be, which is now a vacant lot there. The commission very much liked the bridge design that sits on top of the sign, so they kind of made a replica of the Unionville Bridge that sits on the top of the sign, the Wayfinder sign. And one side says, "Welcome to Unionville," and the other side has the different points of interest and a scannable QR code. And the next meeting for the commission is October 6th at 7:00 PM.
Great, thank you. UVIA.
Nothing to report.
WPCA.
Nothing to, new to report, but our meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00.
Any other liaisons that I have missed? Okay. Seeing none, we now go to the report of the Town Manager.
We spoke about the Parsons Property Update. We also mentioned the next town council meeting is going to be reserved, it's, second town council meetings are reserved for workshops, and this one will focus on the 1928 Building Committee. Topics will include the review and scope and charge of the building committee, timeline of the project, and communication plan. So, the committee will be coming with the architect and looking to, I think, change and review the charge, the scope of the project. And then, just, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, but I put it in writing, we did apply for a steep grant, and it was for $500,000 to install a splash park and four pickleball courts at Westwoods Drive. And I think we're going to hear, they usually come out, I think, in September, October for the award, so hopefully we could be awarded a steep grant. And that is it.
Okay. Thank you. Have a motion to approve the Town Manager's Report.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Town Manager's Report for September 27th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. We'll now go on to appointments.
Thank you. I know that the Democratic side also has a couple, so I'll read up mine first, and then we'll, if you can read up all hers.
Sure.
All right. Agenda item L1, I'd like to make a motion that George Santos be appointed to the Building Code of Appeals for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2027.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L6, I'd like to make a motion that Phil Chabot be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for a two-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L7, make a motion that Warren Hu be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for a two-year term beginning August, I'm sorry, October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L8, I'd make a motion that Peter Ramchandini be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for a two-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L10, that Michelle Palin be appointed to the Farmington Historic District Commission for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2027.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L11, make a motion that Joanne Lawson be appointed to the Farmington Historic Commission for a balance of a five-year term beginning October 9th, 19th, 2022, ending September 30th, 2026.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L15, that Christian Hoheb be appointed to the Housing Authority for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2027.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L18, that Talia Stigliano be appointed as a member of the Retirement Board for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending 2024.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L22, make a motion that Ann Wolfling be appointed to the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commissioner for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2027.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd make a motion that Kevin Ray, I'm sorry, agenda item L24, that Kevin Ray be appointed to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2027.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
And the last one, agenda item L25, that Scott Hurwitz be appointed to the 1928 Building Committee with a definite term effective immediately.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy, any comments on that, or?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Were there any comments, I'm sorry? Seeing none, all in favor? Fine. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Okay, Rafina.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Ned Statian, it's L3, to the Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission. No, sorry. That would be L4. Let me start with L3. I would like to make a motion to appoint Bob Hannan, reappoint, rather, Bob Hannan to the, L3, to the Conservation Inland and Wetlands Commission.
Second.
Okay, let's get the terms in there, just so we can read that, too. Beginning October 1st, ending September 30th, 26th.
October 3rd, or October 1st?
October 1st.
Okay. That Bob Hannan be appointed to the Conservation Inland and Wetlands Commission for a four-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, and then ending September 30th, 2026.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Shall I read a little bit about Bob, or?
If you like, that would be under discussion, but.
Okay, we'll move, we'll move on, we know who Bob is. Okay, I'd also like to make a motion, L4, to appoint Ned Statian to be appointed Conservation and Inland and Wetlands Commission for a four-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2026.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Okay, I'd like to appoint Mary Jane Parlow, L5, to be appointed as the Democratic Register of Voters for the balance of the two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 4th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Okay, so then I'm at L9. Okay. I'd like to make a motion, L9, that Thomas Hyde be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion?
Yes, please, can I just tell you a little bit about Thomas Hyde? Okay. Thomas Hyde and his family moved to Farmington, and he brings a wealth of experience to the, or will bring a wealth of experience to the Economic Development Committee. He is currently the Chief Executive Officer of Nogatuck Valley Regional Development Corporation in Waterbury, and has represented the borough of Nogatuck and the city of Waterbury on various economic development projects. He is also the interim Director of Waterbury Development Corporation, where he oversaw construction projects and established a grants office that brought in over $30 million in funding to date.
Great. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next.
Okay, I am going to L23. Thank you very much. That Barbara Marsh be appointed to the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2027.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. And if you could get the clerk a copy of the list of the names with proper spelling for those who are not currently in this, it'd be great. Okay. That covers all of our appointments. Moving on to item M, old business, we have none. N, new business. New business.
Thank you. I lost my, my papers here.
Sorry.
It's okay. Yes, agenda item N1, I'd make a motion to accept the CROG Council on Consulting Route 4 Connectivity Study, Third Bridge Process as presented, which includes the location of the Third Bridge. Any improvements to the Route 4 approaches and direct, the Director of Public Works Town Engineer to continue to work with CROG and all other appropriate agencies to advance this bridge to project construction.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy?
So, we heard the presentation tonight, and you see in the note, you're accepting the study, and then you're directing Russ and CROG to continue to work with CROG and all other appropriation, appropriate agencies to advance this bridge to construction and looking for the funding source. And then, just a high-level summary of a timeline, which I think we've discussed with Russ and CROG earlier, is that the action items will take place to bring this bridge project to construction, is that the town of Farmington to purchase 1535 and 1541 Farmington Avenue property, which will reduce the design duration of the project and allow the property to be used as a staging area. The Director of Public Works and CROG and all appropriate agencies apply for the funding. We need to secure funding. The project would, the design would begin, we'd have to go through all the permitting, and then you'd have the, complete the final design, complete all approvals, advertise for construction, and award the bid for construction. And given the various federal funding programs that have recently been made available, we are hopeful this project will be selected from one of these funding programs. Unfortunately, we do not know the exact timing of the potential funding, but the likelihood of receiving funding is promising, since we're now on the STIP list. And that's something recently that we got on the STIP list, and that's very good news, and so this project does seem like it's moving along, and I think by accepting this report, we will show CROG and the state that we are very interested in having, getting the project completed.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N2, I'd make a motion to approve the municipal opt-out of accessory apartments in accordance with Connecticut General Statute of Section 8-20.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy?
As you can see in the note, as required by the Connecticut General Statute, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on July 11th and unanimously approved opting out of the Connecticut General Statute requirements pertaining to accessory apartments. I've listed the summaries, reasons of opting out as follows, and we also have Shannon on the line on Zoom if we have any particular questions, but really that, well, actually, what I'm going to do is I'll just turn it over to Shannon, and she can give just a reader's digest version of my note. Hi, Shannon.
Hi, good, hi, good evening, everyone. As Kathy noted, I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. Yes, the 2021 Legislative Session put forth changes to the Connecticut General Statutes, specifically a number of sections in 8-2, which deal with our planning and zoning regulations. Two of those we are allowed to opt out of. One of them is this N2 agenda item, which is the accessory apartments. And the regulations put forth in the Connecticut General Statutes were going to be more broad and more liberal than what we felt was appropriate for Farmington. So, we had the discussion with our Town Planning and Zoning Commission. We held our hearing as required by the Connecticut General Statutes to opt out of this, and then the final stage is for our town council to approve this opt-out. And then, we do have, Farmington does have an accessory apartment regulation that we feel is, is appropriate and manageable for Farmington and the neighborhoods that we have in our community.
Great, thank you, Sean. Any questions for Shannon?
Yes. Sorry, can you clarify a little bit? So, the state has a broader regulation, so in terms of like the number of parking spaces that you're allowed to have? that you're allowed to have?
So for, that, that's a separate, so that's this, N three deals with the parking spaces, and two is the accessory apartment itself, allowing a thousand square feet, allowing them to be rented out to non-family members, allowing them to be rented. Right now, our accessory apartment regulations requires it to be for a family member or for domestic assistance, whether it's childcare or elder parent care or senior care that nature. It allowed detached dwelling units, so if you could imagine your, your neighbor being able to, in essence, construct a mini house in their, in their backyard. And there are perhaps some neighborhoods in Farmington where, where that may be okay and, and the parcels are large enough that, that could be sustainable. There are other neighborhoods in Farmington where the lots are much smaller and that obviously would start to create logistical issues on a number of fronts.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Other questions for Shannon? No, thank you, appreciate that. Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N three, I'd like to make a motion to approve the municipal opt-out for dwelling unit parking space limitations in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section eight dash two, letter P.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy?
And again, Shannon, if you could review this with the council?
Of course. So again, this was the, the other item that the legislature put through last year with respect to changes to our, the zoning portion of the Connecticut General Statutes, and this has to do with the minimum number of parking spaces for multifamily homes or, or an apartment. And again, it works if, it was a broad, broad regulation for the entire state of Connecticut, and the parking spaces work if you are in a, perhaps a city, and there's lots of public transportation immediately available, regularly available. In Farmington, we don't have that same as it would be, say, in downtown Hartford or Stamford. So we have our parking regulations, understanding that we want to make sure that the vehicles can be accommodated onsite without having spillover onto adjacent parcels and roadways and creating unnecessary parking situations when we have a multifamily home going. So we have multifamily parking regulations in place, and again, it was reviewed with our Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Public hearings were held, the notices were done at that time as required by the General Statute, and it is now back to the town council for the final approval to complete this opt-out process for us.
Great, thank you, Shannon. Any questions? Rafina?
Really quickly, what is the current policy for multifamily houses and, or dwellings and the number of parking spaces in Farmington?
It varies depending upon where we are. So depending upon the zone, so our special innovation zone up at, in the Yukon area has a lower parking requirement than, say, the midpoint development area that has a higher parking requirement because midpoint's in the center, right in the center of Farmington. But Yukon is upright in the, you know, the business area and right adjacent to the parking rides and the interstate. So we have a variety of, of parking regulations, and it's done understanding the nature of the community and the location of the parcels and the amenities that are next to them.
Okay, can you just give me a number, like can you ballpark? So for example, if you have a multifamily dwelling around Yukon, how many parking spaces?
So I believe it's one, 1.25 for a one-bedroom and two spaces for a two-bedroom up in the special innovation zone, and then down in the midpoint, we're up at, I believe, one and a half or one and three-quarters for a one-bedroom and two and a half for a two-bedroom and more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Thank you, Shannon, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Good night.
You too.
Agenda item N four, I'd like to make a motion that Section fifty-five dash one of the Town Code of Ordinance be waived and that Hindy Tennis LLC of West Haven, Connecticut, be awarded a contract to repair the tennis courts at Irving Robbins Middle School at a cost not to exceed $53,000.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy?
Due to the construction of the new high school, the tennis courts on the site are not available for high school athletic or recreational use. In order to get the tennis courts ready for the high school tennis team season, we're requesting that the bidding requirements be waived and that a contract be awarded to Hindy Tennis to perform the work this fall so the courts are ready for use in the spring of 2023 for the, primarily that they're in acceptable shape for the high school tennis team.
Okay, we have a motion of second, any questions? Comments?
One question, I play there often. Will we also be taking care as part of this proposal, the fencing around the tennis courts? Or is that a Town of Farmington issue?
Russ?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N five, I make a motion to award bid number three eighteen Brickyard Road Reconstruction Phase Two to Waters Construction Company Incorporated of Bridgeport, Connecticut at a contract cost of $711,472.75, subject to Connecticut Department of Transportation, CROG, CHRO review and approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second, Kathy?
First thing, I think we should announce that this is a project that was 100% funded by grant funds. Thank you, Russ Arnold, for applying and getting this grant for us. And this is, the purpose is to undertake the milling and paving of approximately 23, 2300 feet of Brickyard Road from approximately 50 feet north of Wildwood Road to the Town of Avon Town Line.
Okay, have a motion of second, any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N six, make a motion to award bid number three twenty-two sanitary sewer pipe to Jack Fairley Company of Bloomfield, Connecticut at a purchase price of 171.09 per linear foot.
Second.
We have a motion of second, Kathy?
This bid is to contract with the vendor to provide 1,000 lineal feet and 30-inch inside diameter sanitary sewer pipe. The pipe will be used to replace the sanitary sewer trunk line in the midpoint development. It's a private-public partnership where the town is paying for the pipe and the developer's installing it to replace the existing 60-year-old pipe. Jack Farley Company submitted the lowest bid price, and they actually have the pipe and they're ready for delivery, which is an important point these days.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just quickly, is a sewer trunk line, is that, is that a type of pipe, or what is that exactly?
Russ?
So this trunk line is the main pipe, it's 30 inches in diameter, it's probably as big as this podium, that carries the sewage from Unionville all the way to the treatment plant. And working through the midpoint development process, if we were to put this project out to bid, it would probably cost the summer neighborhood about $2.5 million. So, because they have to bypass pump, probably about 2 million gallons a day for the duration of installing 1,000 feet of pipe, which is not going to be overnight, it's going to probably be a three-month process. So I felt it was a pretty good avenue to make a deal with these guys, all supply the pipe and they gotta install it and as part of the project. And we're getting, and that trunk line is 65 years old, the whole length of it is, so we're getting, you know, 1,000 feet of it replaced for less than $200,000. So I think that's a pretty good deal.
Thanks, Russ.
Yep.
So less than $200,000, and it would cost about a million and a half if we didn't go this route. So our decision is, should we save 1.3 million? Okay, any other questions? Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Thank you, Russ, for your work there. Agenda item N seven, I'd like to make a motion that the following appropriation transfer be made from, made from and to the accounts listed below for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 general fund budget.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy?
So you can see from the financial report, we're moving money from certain departments into other departments. I think the, the main takeaway here is, is that in the summary for fiscal year 2021, 2022, general fund revenues exceeded budget amounts by $2 million and change, and expenditures were less than budgeted amounts by $117,207, resulting in positive results in operations totaling $2,130,050. When the amount is added to unassigned fund balance, it increases the general fund balance to $20,484,748, or 16.9% of the operating budget. In, in general, in summary, our revenues did really, really well this year, we had a very good year with the revenues. Our expenditures in some were, areas were tight, we had a lot of vacancies and a lot of things, but we still met budgets and we were able to return money to the town. Utilities at the end of the year or during the year were fluctuating, costs went up, a lot of overtime expenses for vacancies and things of that nature, but we were able to transfer, as Joe said, transfer money and return over $2 million to the general fund.
We have a motion of second, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N eight, make a motion that $75,000 be transferred from the capital outlay account in the fiscal year 2021, 2022 adopted budget to the 1928 Building Planning and Design Account in the Capital Projects Fund for expenses related to the work of the 1928 Building Committee.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy?
So as you know, the 1928 Building Committee has been working with the architectural firm of Silver Petraselli and Associates to develop options for the reuse of the 1928 portion of the Farmington High School. The amount of $100,000 was included in the 2223 capital budget for this purpose. The committee issued an RFQ for schematic designs and project cost estimates, and the pricing proposals came in over the $100,000 that were needed in the, allocated in the capital budget. The committee will also need funds for marketing and communication materials to keep residents informed about the proposed project. As a result, it's estimated that an additional $75,000 will be needed. In the closeout of the fiscal 2122 operating budget, overall budget expenditures were under budget by $117,000, that's what we just talked about. In the transfer closeout motion included in this agenda, it's proposed to transfer $75,000 of the 117 to the capital outlay account. If that motion's approved, then the $75,000 will be available for the transfer to the capital budget.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N nine, I'd like to make a motion to cancel November eighth, 2022 Town Council meeting and set a regular Town Council meeting for November fifteenth, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy?
November eighth is Election Day, and also the Register of Voters will need to use the council chambers, so we're just pushing the meeting one week later.
What if we just all volunteered to help the Registers when we came in here and did it?
You can.
Okay, we have a motion of seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N ten, to approve the following property tax refunds as listed below.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Don't usually discuss it, Kathy, but do you want to make any comments why there are so many?
Just because of the end-of-year taxes, everyone's paying their taxes.
And they're paying extra evidently, so that's good. We have a motion of second, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item O.
Did you want to leave an ending comment?
Don't you get ahead of me. We're gonna be moving into executive session, we'll actually be returning after this executive session, but what are we doing with our recording?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that since the motion is listed in the agenda, I would say that we'll, we'll just come back and, what do you think, Kat? Can you, can you run the, to put us, to keep us back on?
They will have to do it in the back and just put something on, but yeah, it, we can, we can keep the recording running if that's what you would like, but it would be muted and a sign up that you're in executive session.
Okay. Before we go to executive session, I will leave you a quote from Sir Isaac Newton, "We build too many walls and not enough bridges."
With that, agenda item O dash one, make a motion for executive session to discuss matters concerning sale or acquisition of real property to adjourn this immediate executive session by, as permitted by Connecticut General Statute, Section one dash two-two-five, so that the following purposes are allowed by Section one dash two-hundred-sixth, and members in attendance shall be Town Council, Town Manager, Director of Public Works.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Executive session at 9:03, I am sure. We are back on, it is 9:30, we are out of executive session. We move to item N eleven, Joseph.
New business, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing October eleventh, 2022 at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the purchase of property owned by Kathleen Binkowski and Patrick J. Murray, located at 1535 Farmington Avenue, which is 37 acres, and 1541 Farmington Avenue, which is 1.09 acres, for a total purchase price of $780,000.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Kathy?
So what we're doing tonight is we're setting the public hearing, so we'll go through the project in detail at the public hearing on October eleventh, but just you have the information about each one of the properties. Do want to note that they're both waterfront properties, and we are recommending that the town purchase these properties for the future third bridge project. To complete this project, these parcels or a portion of these parcels need to be acquired. It's a benefit to acquire the parcels through the process now instead of the state taking the properties through the eminent domain process, which could significantly delay the project. It's also a benefit to acquire these properties now so that it can be used as a staging area through construction. Lastly, these project, properties are riverfront, therefore, the remaining portions could be used for passive recreation after the construction is complete. We'll, I think, go through questions and have a hearing at the October eleventh, but